Experiment, Chris and I talked, they're looking at other options because the feedback from the residents and I went and sat there and I looked and wow, it's not a whole lot different than it was before.
And you can hear that they're taking it seriously.
Yes ma'am. Yes ma'am. Chris said, any project in the future where you were doing these kind of lights, absolutely would consider shields at the very beginning. Thank you.
And we don't, uh, go ahead Jimmy. Mike, um, I thought we had a discussion around the, uh, the, um, what do you call, like the elimination, what is it, the, um, like how bright it is?
LEDs.
Yeah, but could you not control the, how bright they are?
These, these ones are, were not, you know, we didn't get that type of LED that you, they can actually dial some of the other ones back, but we don't, we don't have those types.
Okay, so I thought we discussed whether we wanted the bright or the, I don't know.
They are looking at some, we could give, replace eleven of the heads that are along the frontage of Hampton Park to change the light pattern.
Does anybody contacted FPL as to what they do in other communities relative to this issue?
I've not contacted, I've been working with them, that's all.
I thought FPL might have a greater exposure of this possibility as of happening and would say to use X, Y, Z. Whereas Bentley might be limited in the scope of where they've done the work, I don't know, just trying to take a guess. It can't be the first place this has ever happened.
It's also dependent on the fixture you have and how you provide shielding for it.
And you can't, those aren't adjustable at all, right? They're just, they're fixed.
Correct. That's where you would change the LEDs to change the pitch of the light. We're, we're still looking at, we're gonna try a few different options still.
Thank you.
Chris, did you want to talk to me about the meeting of the county in the park site?
Yeah, we just had a brief meeting, talked to the county planner and basically you can put a building out there, up to four stories, it can be an administrative building, just wrecked to it, and the only thing they mentioned was if you want to do one development order to do a building and your recreational uses include your concept plan for your bocce ball or whatever you'd like to add, or if you want to just come in with a development order for a building and then do the wreck later. But there's no problems at all with the county on putting in either steel or admin building or.
What happened to the consultant that we hired who said, can't do it?
Well, they weren't sure and hadn't actually taken that proposal to us.
Okay, so yeah, you go on that far.
No.
So there's no LVO required, it's just a development order, period.
Correct.
So what, what, where are we going from here?
There was another thing I was gonna ask you, would you like to have a sort of forum where we have public inputs, do you want to have a meeting or a series of meetings to involve the community to see how you want to develop that site?
To me, it's two-pronged deal, if you want, we got the admin building, but it's three-pronged. Then we have the, uh, do we want rec-related services out of that building or capability? And then the third thing is, do we have to have their approval for bocce ball, uh, what do you call it?
Just whatever, just any of the other amenities.
All three have to have an LVO?
No, it's just the concept. The only thing they, they're interested in is you'll have to have a landscape up from the adjacent community.
So it sounds like what we need to do is the next thing is to develop what we wanted that, to come up with a preliminary plan and then get public input.
And one, uh, one more additional question, can it be multiple buildings? Do they have any restrictions on?
No, because you have twenty acres up there and you have quite a lot of sites.
Okay, so we could put administrative building and a recreational facility together on top of each other, independent, so no restrictions there up to four stories.
So there was a question, we could bring that consultant back and make it work with us to develop a, work a huge develop a master concept plan for the site.
Had you been back in contact with them since you found out that we really aren't limited in what we can do here?
They had a representative at that meeting.
I mean, I, I think there's a couple of different steps there, I mean, I think the first thing, if we can understand maybe what we want in the administrative side, you know, kind of build some requirements, identify what are needs there that correlate to what we're gonna use this building for, and then build out from there. I mean, we don't necessarily need to determine whether we're gonna have bocce versus, you know, horseshoes or whatever, but let's figure out what, the facilities we need, and then the second phase would be.
Let staff, let staff come back with a preliminary layout of what the first steps are, then we build from there.
Yeah.
So I wanted to see if you wanted me to engage them to work on a master concept plan with this.
I don't think we need them yet, I'd want to hear from us, us first, I don't think we need some self-managing.
We need some high level requirements to give them. So we just need to figure out when we can do that, it'll probably have to be added to the budget, uh, next, probably next month to have a works, working session.
The good news is it's not an LVO.
No, we're good.
And there was one last thing, I sent an email to Tony regarding Commerce Drive, the eastern portion, we have an issue with the parking that's come up over and over, I posed a question to Tony and he had written, actually a memorandum about it previously, I guess I'll let him describe it, but we needed some sort of resolution from the, he had recommended a resolution from the board at that time.
You know, we're talking with eastern portion, we're talking to portion, I mean, we're at Bullheart Inn, a couple hundred yards maybe.
Is this because of the restaurant?
That's what it sounds like, and, and I think we could, just going to the next portion of the meeting, which will be June twenty-first, bring back a resolution with the protocol, for a designation of prior tier here for authorizing various agents to tow and put in your towing truck.
Can somebody's staff just simply call, uh, Lee County and ask them, what was the basis of the approval of that restaurant? From what I understand, the parking for that restaurant was on the basis of internal seating, and they went and built the outside, external seating, which was not a part of the approval.
It was a code enforcement issue.
That's my point, since, can we call them and check to see because, uh, where I'm seeing this thing's going is no parking signs.
I'm hoping maybe we've already done this, but have we reached out to the restaurant owner? We have, we've had direct communication, we have an issue with it and that's, hadn't gotten something right, is that what I'm hearing?
And he actually, he actually responded because he tried to lease some parking from No Child up behind next door because they don't use much of their lot, and also across the street, and, uh, his Jason owner said, well, we'll give you three places for your employees, but that's all we're willing to give you. He offered to pay them for the parking.
So he's trying, right?
And he, and he understands it, and I even went as far as to say, when one of your patrons hit your backflow preventer and the water's shooting up over here, don't call us.
Yeah, the, the permit only has for thirty parking places, that was all the permit allowed. So if you figure out thirty parking places and how many seats they have in the restaurant, it really doesn't correspond, especially now that there's part of another, part of the other building that, that's empty and they want to put something else there, so I, I was wondering about the permit with how many seats.
Something's fishy there.
But the problem like that, if we can wreck the no parking system, we're still running into a problem.
The tow ways are no parking tow ways, so we'll come back to the board on June twenty-first. I'm assuming they want to hide technical enforcement to expand its seating to outside areas?
Yeah. They've probably got more seats than they have on the permit.
That's my guess.
Yeah, and one other issue too is if you're, when you apply for a beverage license, you have to describe the premises for which the beverages can be sold at, or consumed, and typically they require zoning sign off through those laws, and local governments have approved that, so if there's outdoor beverage service, maybe Lee County signed off on it, we'll find out.
Thank you. Utility manager.
Good afternoon, King, all utility manager, just wanted to start out with the irrigation numbers for, mostly I wanted to concentrate on April and May, and these are just well numbers that came out of our well, uh, in April, we hit seventy-nine point two million gallons that came out of the sandstone aquifer. With our new permitting, we're permitted to eighty-four point four, so we got real, real, real close to violating our permit on the sandstone aquifer. Uh, we did get a whole lot more gallonage on the permit, but it came on the lower hall floor inside, um, and with the chlorine, with our chlorine rider, or provision added to it, um, we don't want to be getting too deep into that lower hall floor because of these riders that they put on with the chlorides with the monitoring wells. May, with the rain, we were well on our way to beating what we did in April, in May, with the rains, we hit seventy-seven million out of the sandstone, or sixty-two million out of the sandstone, and fourteen billion out of the lower hall floor, and that's when the rains came, had those rains not come, we'd have really, really been pushing, pushing way beyond our maximum, uh, our permit limits, uh, if the numbers were, if they were, would have stayed steady, once the rains hit, irrigation pretty much disrupted, the bottom fell right out of the market on that one. So with, with that in mind, uh, I'm going to just slide into the CIP, we've added two new pumps, we were going to be adding new VFDs and new pumps to the irrigation system, and when we had these new pumps and the new VFDs we gained, because of the, the older pumps are so inefficient, uh, with the new pumps, we, it's really, with four of them, four brand new ones in there, we're up eight thousand gallons permitted, which is maximum we are going to get out of that system. So we're definitely gonna have to do something on the long-term side of that. And I also wanted to give you on the CIP, uh, fire hydrants, we're in the final stage, we're in the lift stage, we painted, did, paint, painting was done over a three-week period, uh, that is sanding, blasting, pulling the caps, never sealing them, um, and then painting them over total, um, and then we lifted a total of sixteen fire hydrants, they're out of code, we got back into code, and the last part is going to be repairs, which has turned into a very big issue because, uh, on a lot of these fire hydrants, we're finding that the gate valves, uh, we have no way of isolating them. So if the, uh, the fire hydrant is operational, we can shut down at our leisure, there's nothing wrong with that fire hydrant. Fire department needs it, for whatever reason, we opened that fire hydrant, it works.
You mean, there's no gate valve between the main and.
There's, the gate valve doesn't work, we cannot isolate it, so the only way we can.
It's there, it doesn't work.
It just doesn't work. The only way we can do it is to shut the watering down, which means we're gonna be shutting down communities, people's water, it's gonna turn into much more than the initial plan called for. Um, if the plant, if the hydrant is operational, we can do it at our leisure, so we can plan it, get it all set up to do it, and then systematically do it, we have four that are non-operational that are going to be repaired, uh, right out, right away, and then we have another seventeen leaks, gate valves not working in various states of disrepair that need to be, uh, corrected. And, uh, the BCI has come and started today, and by the end of next week, our telemetry system will be completely upgraded, we've added three more lift stations to the system, and we'll be adding all of the, uh, command controls to the wells. And it has new, uh, new software that's going to add all kinds of features, and one of the biggest ones was the south Florida water, uh, management, uh, permit conditions, if we get anywhere near our permit conditions, it will lock us out of those wells, uh, as a safeguard, to let you know, you know, you're getting way too close to your permit level, uh, and they will lock you out, and a command, uh, it's a command control system, you have to go in and unlock it, but it's a really nice feature, once it's all online, we'll be able to track well usage, everything, we'll have, just, uh, with the SCAS system that we have now, we can, we have almost a year and a half now of data, so once these wells go online, and the tank leveling, we'll be, we'll have all kinds of, be able to accumulate a lot of historical data.
You're getting all that data to Danny now? He's gonna need that to write that report he just got authorized to do.
And, and that, and the new employees, we've had four new employees in the last year and two months, um, two have been here for a year now, two are still on their six-month trial. Um, we added the last one, he's been here about three, three weeks now, um, and he was born in this century. Just to give you a. Born in this century. That's scary. And that's, that's all I have.
Any questions for Danny?
You did indicate to the, the board the issue we talked about, residents burying man, uh, fire hydrants, that we're gonna be working on that, we may have to get letters out to set property owners to where they have landscaped and the fire hydrants are, are submerging, the grass and the dirt level is going up, instead of where you can see the bottom attachment of a fire hydrant to the hunting pad, there's about eighteen inches of dirt. What do they say, so I have to come out and let you dig to get a look on the, for the fire, the fire department has to.
Just hope it's not their house.
So that's one, and then the other one, uh, that he and I talked about, and I guess we've got a consultant coming in and doing some testing, pump stations, uh, we saw some stuff up in Hampton Park on the, uh, Bellcrest pump station, granted it's going on eight years, I think we found seven, eight years, but we had to pull the pumps, they were destroyed. So we got some issues of things, the pumps are starting to turn over, so I hope the R and R capital improvement funds got all this itemized, I, we'll be checking that, it's just one of those things, is we're getting old, and this stuff is starting to fail.
It's the young stuff.
Yep, and I know that we, we had a lot of lessons learned last year during the storm season, and made a lot of improvements, but now we're getting in that time period again, and we have to make sure we've got all the right protocols in place, and we're checking and preparing for in two or three months when we may, you know, have another one of those, and I'm sure you have a ton of lessons learned.
I don't know if Chris's, this is from Chris and you, I don't know if we've received a letter yet, but I was told about it, uh, this morning at the club, uh, I believe the country club is going to be asking for a review of the five wells in the transition, transmission mains that are ours and permitted to us, that we need to be looking at, uh, they want those upgraded, they have used for those. And if you go back and do the research, if you go back and do the research, it's very interesting, had a good conversation with David Caldwell, and primarily, cause he can recall why those wells were put in and given to the CDD is there is a covenant provision that the golf course couldn't drill the wells, and so Westinghouse's theory back then was that would be the responsibility of the CDD, and that it was a benefit, considered a benefit for the entire community. Well, I think the golf course, I know the golf course is coming in, we probably ought to have that for the twenty-first meeting, ready to have a discussion of, we need to inventory those five wells and that transmission main, and find out what it takes to activate those.
The wells wouldn't, it would be the transmission lines that would be the, they predict them, I, there's the transmission lines, even if those wells are not ideal condition, we'd, we'd get to those, those lines have probably been compromised multiple times.
But we need to test it, is my point, we need to get a well online and test that deal to find out, because they want it activated.
We'd be happy to, we'd be happy to enter into a service contract.
I don't think that's what they're gonna say, they're gonna say it was ours to begin with.
Well, then, then they can pay gallonage charges and hook up charges and capacity charges.
Don't shoot the messenger.
Private club.
Thank you, Ken. And I will take a break, but I'm gonna bring Mr. McCullough up first for Stony Brook because I know that he needed to leave, before, we, we're not gonna get to you before you have to leave, so you have, you go ahead and give your report, and I think we're gonna request some money to be trained, heard for landscaping.
Oh, I was gonna have a.
No, no, we're gonna do it after, after, we'll spring you first.
Thank you. Joe McCullough is Stony Brook Advisory Committee Chairman, I'll make this quick, I know that, I believe we're on the agenda today for the budget, I do not have any numbers in front of me of what we propose, so, but I do know that it was the easiest and simplest one we've ever done, it was very straightforward, we changed a couple of line items, and one of them was to remove a line item for a camera out, out along the roads, which had been there for a few years and we never spent that money, never put the camera in. In any case, and one or two other items were modestly adjusted, and we actually proposed a slight reduction in the taxes.
You want a copy of these?
Yeah, I don't need right this minute, I, I do want to say, we're not gonna have a meeting this month, we don't have a, a quarantine, and I'll be going away for at least a couple of weeks, uh, next week, so, there were a couple of things I did want to bring up, one of them that I had requested at the last meeting was to move twenty thousand dollars out of the, um, non-designated reserve account to be put in for landscaping to be used in this current year, not next year, and the reason for that is, we had, we're gonna be spending nearly twenty-three thousand dollars to, uh, repair landscaping that was not budgeted for as a result of criminal last year, so that's, and, and we need some money to do some other routine work on, on that. So I'm asking the board, if you would, somebody to consider, make, make an emotion to approve that, to get that money over there.
Mr. McCullough, that, um, agenda item, okay, was supposed to be in our book, okay? It was sent to Infomax on the twenty-seventh of May, it did not come in our books, I, but when I was here making questions on Monday, I did get a copy of it, and that is the motion where he wants to make, move the twenty thousand, so I will make that motion to move the twenty thousand.
Second? I have, I have.
Let me just say, if you look at the balance, uh, for the O-O four account in Stony Brook, there's about two-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand dollars, as I recall, there abouts supposed to that, uh, that is accumulated of non-designated money from overseas in, in previous years, and it's been sitting there, and all we're willing to do is take that twenty thousand out of there, and in fact, if it does not get spent, it winds up back in that same account anyway.
Chairman, if you have any members of the public they want to comment, just there, surely ask them that.
Yes. Any comments on the motion to transfer a little money, yet?
I'm a little unsure why this is a CDD expense instead of an HSA expense.
Stony Brook has a, Stony Brook has its own separate account because of a lot of the infrastructure, and Stony Brook's community is owned by the CDD, so it's actually a Stony Brook O-O four fund that we're talking about transferring money from one line item to another, it isn't paid for out of general funds.
And it is, it is all raised from taxes strictly on Stony Brook residents.
Right.
Yeah, we, Pelican had a recent situation.
Any other comments? Okay, I'll call the question, all in favor? Aye. Many opposed? You've got your transfer.
Okay, thank you, now, just two more quick things, uh, just a question for Chris, did JT speak to you about signing the easement to build that path next to the number one? Do you need that signature right away, or has.
I told him it's gonna probably be ten days, two weeks, he said, you were back in town now, and I said, thank you.
Okay, cause he'll be back before I go.
We're doing slightly.
Okay, so, but you, you, he's up with that.
The other day.
Okay, all right, and the other other thing is, and I've mentioned it, and I have it by Mike, is that we've requested, and apparently this is not an easy thing to do, it was not part of the development order, but one of our streets, uh, oh, what is it, it's just to a blank, the, uh, the loop, one of the loops that needs a stop sign, it is, uh, Blue Stone. Blue Stone is a loop that looks like a racetrack, and then there's a, an access road, literally a road that runs between our main drag Pebblebrook to the Blue Stone, where that road meets the loop, there's no stop sign. There are two stop signs where the two ends of the loop come around together, the opposing part of the loop, and they're fine, but when people are coming down that little access road to get to the loop and just blowing through there, and it's a very unsafe situation, the kids are coming home from school, we have crosswalks there, and we've had a lot of close calls. We'd like to get a stop sign installed on that little part of Blue Stone that runs to Pebblebrook, but apparently Mike has told me, and he has, you know, speak to this, about there's gonna be a process that we have to go through, the problem is, I don't think that we can do it, because I don't know that we have a standing to be able to do it, because you own the road, or the gateway does, I really think this needs to be initiated by Gateway, and that's what I'm throwing out to you, is to try to, we need to try to get this started, it's not, it's time sensitive, it's some of the other things you talked about, but I'd like to see that stop sign, if possible, in before the school season starts next year. So that's just an FYI.
Do we need a motion to look into that stop sign? No.
Okay, so I'm just asking for the staff here to get that.
Find out what we need to do to get it accomplished.
Yeah, I'd want us to be to have a traffic engineer, I would suggest, take a recommendation that everything is in form, it's.
I expect to Lee County, and we have to, basically, there has to be modifications to the development order, we have to get a, an engineer to look at it, it's just not as simple as going and putting up the stop sign, they won't let us do that, so we'll have to get the, you know, district engineer to, you know, modify the development order for that portion of Stony Brook, and say that, you know, the sign.
Find out how much is this gonna cost? This is, this won't be just buying a thousand dollar sign.
And Mike has made us aware, well aware of that in the past, and that's why we're bringing it to you, to, we just not the decision to really.
He trusts you to go along.
Get this started, it's simple.
Well, the committee should get it started, it's hard, getting the engineer, finding out how much the study's gonna be, finding out.
Well, if it's a district engineer, wouldn't that be staff's responsibility, or the district engineer, to be able to look at that, to ask him?
If Stony Brook is asking for something, that's O-O four, not.
I agree with that, no question about that, but I didn't think that we, as a, as the committee, would be the one to initiate that.
You could, you could direct the engineer on behalf of, to work with Joe in Stony Brook to do this, knowing that O-O four would fund it.
Yeah.
Just a separate invoice.
I'm fine with that, I don't, I don't have a problem with that, and, uh, we certainly will, uh, anything else, Mike?
Any other questions for us? No? Thank you, Mr. McCullough.
Thank you, thanks for moving, I appreciate it.
And with that, I'm gonna call for a five-minute board. And. Utility manager, did we do the monthly utility report?
That's really for informational purposes, there was, unless there were some questions, but.
Okay.
Lot of data.
Lot of data.
It was really good, I did review it, okay, the first action item then is the FDEM and Gateway subgrant agreement for FEMA.
And that's basically just given, given the district manager authority when they send the amendments in, uh, which are basically pay requests, um, instead of them coming to the board each time, it's provided the authorization to take care of that, and, uh, before I would do that too, I would have, um, send those through to Tony to review, and, and I will say one thing, it's, uh, like Danny mentioned, when they add a pot of money, all of a sudden when it hits a state, it shrank, um, if they said, okay, Gateway, you get a million dollars through FEMA, by the time it goes to the state of Florida, it might be nine-hundred thousand, they.
Or five hundred.
They take, they take an administrative allocation off.
Wet their beak.
And one of the, one of the aspect about those agreements is sixty-six pages of a template boilerplate that, um, the amendments may be a few far between, but they may be able to trap some of them.
I, I think it's appropriate that, um, Mr. Sheen may have to be given this.
So I'll make that motion.
Okay, a motion and a second, authorize a district manager to handle this, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So green.
Thank you.
And then this is the Gateway Green South Cleaning and Repairs.
I just, uh, for the first manager for the electric, uh, we had our bid opening on May twenty-second, so we did have, at the pre-bid meeting, pre-bid meeting, we did have four firms represented, uh, when we did the bid opening, uh, we only had one, uh, company respond, uh, but, uh, looking at the, at the prices, the prices are, uh, very, very favorable, um, staff is, is recommending that we move forward, but that's, but, uh, we ought to have a discussion about that.
Was it indicated, indicated that he wanted to.
Yeah, I had one question.
Thank you.
In general, it was a disappointment, we only got a bid, I'm sure you share that with me.
Yeah.
My question comes to the pre-bid meeting, I guess it should direct to Mike and Chris, uh, the guidelines that were given to the four bidders was on the order that, uh, no more than ten percent would be, uh, allocated for mobilization and for ten percent for general requirements, and I just want to make sure that those requirements help to the bid, and if the answer is yes, I have nothing else to say. And I just wanna make sure that those requirements helped to the bid. And if the answer is yes, I have nothing else to say.
What's the answer to that?
I was just looking, was looking through it real quick. To see if that was true.
Did, Danny, did you guys do a post-bid evaluation?
Well, there's only one bid, and it was Met Tower, so...
But I mean, did you check for this, what Bob just brought up?
I, yeah. Yeah, they're, they're significantly higher, I think, in some cases, depending on how you look at it, over 100%. I'm not sure why. I mean, the bids overall are favorable. They're lower than where our estimate was. But that the general requirements and the mobilization were significantly higher than the 10%.
So, they were outside of the original?
They were, specifically at the pre-bid, the question was asked, and then an addendum was issued that clarified that they should not, they will not exceed 10%. That their bid, we received one, their bid had, they were in excess of the 10%, regardless of how you looked at it, whether it was of the net or the gross of the, of the individual bid item, so...
But that's a lump sum item, correct?
Yeah, they were on some items.
So, it's, it does not impact the unit prices of the various services.
Right. Again, the, the costs were fair. They were below what our estimate was. Just that individual item was, was in excess, significantly in excess of what was allowed by the bid.
What do we do? Do that as a way to...
I'm saying, wait, wait back.
Wait that.
And did any reason why we only had one bid come back with their complications, or...
Did anybody contact the other three bidders to find out why they didn't bid?
No, I mean, I've, if Mike wants to answer that. But I mean, the other, getting back to the 10%, though, I mean, the other option you could have is ask the vendor to hold it to the 10% as the bid, as the bid said. I know, I don't know, I mean, I think they could talk to that today to see why. I'm sure there's a reason why it was higher. I can't answer that, but that would be, you know, an option.
Well, I'd, I'd like to know the answer to that, but at this point in time, because of the fact that we've received one bid and the fact that it is a pretty good bid, was quite, quite below the estimate I had, I wouldn't, I don't wanna, you know, start fire or something like that. But I would like to have an answer. Did staff contact the other three bidders, and what were their reasons that why they didn't bid?
I've reached out to the other bidders, and they have not responded. I've reached out...
Mrs. Flaherty, you have a question?
I did have a question. Since we only have one bid, I was wondering if we could go out and rebid? Because aren't we supposed to have more than one bid for projects? And that seems to be...
No, no. The only requirement is that the, that they be competitively lit, bid or solicited. And in this case, whether one or two or three, doesn't matter, it was just one. The board can, if they wish to, reject the bid and advertise that it's a favorable bid and below the original opinion of estimated probable cost, it may be not wise to opt to rebid.
I'm afraid, I'm afraid what the answer would be as to why they didn't bid. And then to rebid, wait 60 days and have it happen again. So, that encompasses nothing. But I would like to know what the answer was, so I'll be making contacts with, because I thought it was premature to be making contacts with the bidders before this meeting. But after this meeting, I think it's open door, that they can be contacted to find out what happened. Because this is not, this is not good for future going on. Now, the prices that Chris gave us were, were good for going forward, because they were substantially less than what we had had estimated as much as even a month ago.
And, and if you rebid, you really put him at a disadvantage. He gave us a bid.
You're showing my numbers.
Yeah, that's right. That's, that's...
And I probably wouldn't bid it again.
It's called sunshine ball.
It's not a good idea.
Yeah, I, I have no problem, I have no problem with the informality of that.
Yeah, I'll let Chris come up and talk about the general parts of the part. I just, they have to be TV'd and cameras have to go into the pipes in wet conditions, and it's not, it's not cheap to have that done. But I'll, I'll let Chris come in.
And when can, when, once is the schedule? Have we talked about targets to start?
Immediately.
Chris, you ready to go and...
And how long do you think it'll take to do all the work that we proposed? I'm just curious. Yeah, I'm not gonna hold your feet to the fire.
Ask her about when it's gonna rain.
Yeah. It's, it's all depending on the weather and the amount of material that's in the pipes. Some pipes are really, really easy to do, and some pipes, you can only do one run in a day. But we don't plan on leaving once we start. We'll, we have some other customers we may pull out a few days, but we'll stay on it till we finish.
What do we have to do, assuming we have a motion to go ahead and accept the contract, which I'm gonna make in a minute? What's the process on the notice proceed? Is it imminent tomorrow? What, what are we waiting on for the notice proceed? Show, I guess, what, insurance certificates and that type of stuff?
It'd be, first of all, notice of award, signing the contract, and then...
You should notice to proceed.
And we had insurance, it all was...
You can sign the contract after the meeting? The guy that was sending over there, the big guy, I'll tell him you said that. He went to that street cleaning.
I'm just kidding.
And Madam Chairman, we've, we've got this aligned to our budget for this year.
That was my question.
That's why we need to get...
We said we've got allocated funds that we could leverage for this. Your current budget has about 124K of it, and then the rest would have to come from either general fund reserves or your capital project reserves. Both have it if you need it.
What are we, what will we be setting aside to do this? Is there anything that is major that we don't want to?
Well, you'd have to transfer about 130,000 to make the 256, if his 124 is correct. So, we're looking at transferring that amount to match the contract. And probably to play it safe, you better look at an additional 10% for contingencies. So, you're probably gonna be transferring about 140, 150,000 dollars.
But my question is, what would that 100 or 40,000 dollars have been used for that we're moving to do this project? Is there anything that we is, are gonna be neglecting because we moved this money?
I mean, I, I can answer from a financial standpoint. And then, from a project standpoint, staff would have to say. From a financial standpoint, if you're taking cash reserves, it's from unassigned cash reserves, which means nothing, it has not been earmarked or restricted for anything in particular as of today. Now, again, that pot of money only, you know, you only got so much in there, so obviously, you're using that now. There's, you know, it'll be a future project down the line, and you'll have to either fund with additional money or something else. But I think staff can kinda speak to their current budget. But I know that the general fund has been doing very well in terms of spending. So, you know, at the end of the day, I don't think you're gonna be taken away from anything in particular.
So, Chris or Mike, is there something that you're gonna not do this year to do this project? Or are there things that you weren't planning on doing anyway, even though they're in the budget?
I would have to look at the project list where we are. At the moment, I can, it says it's cash reserves, not on the capital side.
Buildings, we did do the building.
That's true. That's true. Okay. Do you have a question?
I have a question. Mr. Flaherty, could you show me where these monies are coming from?
No, we just...
She wants to actually see it.
Yeah, I wanna see.
Is this document that she's...
That's our budget.
This year's budget or next year's budget?
That's this year's budget.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to waive the informality of both the fact that we received only a single bid and the fact that the provisions of the bid documents that called for a not-to-exceed amount on the MoDBOB and the general were over the limit, that we accept the bids of Met Tower in the $256,000 something.
Eight twenty, eight thirty-two.
Two hundred and sixty-six, eight thirty-two?
Eight thirty-two.
Okay, I didn't see that. From Met Tower and immediately proceed to issuing contract award and notice proceed.
Can you give a question?
Yeah. I'm a little sticky in here.
Thank you.
Two different spots.
From here and here and here and here. Okay, thank you.
Well, while they're doing that, I went ahead and took Chris's unit prices and applied them to the rest of Gateway Greens and to the rest of Gateway for all the communities, and have given them a copy of... It's a pain in the butt not being able to communicate with the board members, but Chris can forward the emails. But essentially, it was what, about $1.2 million? And we'd originally estimated about 1.8 to 2.2 million dollars, so it's a drastic...
Is that including the 256, or excluding?
Including.
Including total, total costs?
Yeah. So, when we go to look at the budget for the next couple of years of how we're going to do this, we can... And I talked to Chris, and he had no problem with taking and doing this kind of a transformation. I'd wanna check the math, though, because this MoDBOB and general was a little disconcerting. And now that I understand what happened, I think the way I ratioed it was probably correct. But I wanna make sure the math is right. But where we were looking at possibly is much as 2.2, 2.3 million a month ago, it's gonna be substantially less than that. So, that was good news.
I think that there were a couple of areas that had been identified that were considerably clogged that we really have to connect. Those communities deserve that.
I know. We've got, we've got a bunch of clogged sewers.
So, it's Chris's stays favorable.
Well, the only thing, the only thing you gotta worry about that is when you start going in and you spend one day here and then go another day here, then the MoDBOB goes preserve. So, but I, it would be very easy to go back into each of these communities where we have serious deals, trying to have at least what, how many reach, this is a real wild one. How many reaches can you do? How many reaches would you wanna be able to do to stay in an area one or two days? Three, five, eight?
Something like that.
Something like that. We can go back and take the worst of each community, pull them out, and then apply that. And maybe that's our next process.
And, you know, 'cause on that listing that we have, there were some that were identified as being really severe.
Timberwood, Timberwood Preserve, or I'm sorry, Timberwood, what is that? Not Timberwood. Timber...
Timber Creek.
Timber Creek, I'm sorry. And Daniel's Preserve, and Gateway Greens had sections that were bad, really bad. Large pipe bad.
Mrs. Flaherty, you had, I just, like, Mr. Teague, would you please make his motion?
Oh, okay.
I would suggest that the board look into some type of maintenance. We did some emergency boxes on the Gateway Boulevard. Had about a seven-foot sump that was completely up to the invert of the pipe.
Wait, where?
On Gateway Boulevard.
Gateway Boulevard, where they had water ponding after the rain.
Gateway Boulevards were, they were all cleaned as a part of the stormwater turnover project.
No, we, we actually found construction debris in the bottom.
I don't think that that's true.
This is one of, isn't one of the pipes that were in the Boulevard right away?
Yes.
Yes.
The Boulevard right away was 100% clean, because we had to sign a certificate to the county. We paid that, all that clean.
We, we vacuumed seven feet of material out of the box.
We're, we're about, Chris?
It was in the, just past the Stony Brook day.